Premier is here. Premier Heating and Air. Log on today to premierishere.com. Our call for service. Premier Heating and Air, a locally owned and operated company.
This February 1st, 2024, meeting of Dublin City Council is hereby called the ward. Please stand for our invocation and remain standing for our pledge to the flag. Councilman Mascara will provide the invocation this evening.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, thank you for all the gifts that you give us. The Lord, you are the beginning and end of all our thoughts and things that we should, that we should strive to be. What I ask, and I will ask the citizens of this town, of this council, as we have a meeting today, and you will, with your discretion, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I want to thank everyone for coming this evening. We're going to begin with the first item in our agenda, which is approval of the January 18th City Council meeting minutes. You've all had an opportunity to review the minutes. Do we have a motion? We have a motion for approval from Councilman Smith and a second from Councilman Colby. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Item number two of our agenda is approval of bills over $15,000. Mr. Powell.
The council has all the bills in their packets.
Any questions regarding the bills, your staff? If not, do we have a motion? We have a motion from Councilman Smith and a second from Councilman Brown. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Item number three of our agenda is approval of purchases over $15,000. Mr. Powell.
The bill of purchase tonight is for the police department, this person laptops. This is a purchase from Law &amp; Order Technology LLC for 10 laptops and then another $23,000, excuse me, $25,596. This is, last year, the council approved the purchase of 30 laptops. We have budgeted for those and at the same time, we're applying for a grant through the governor's office, the Violence Prevention Grant, and we have since been notified that we have received that grant, our budget for that grant's been approved. The budget actually included 40 laptops, so this is the 10 remaining laptops, only need to complete that purchase. Staff recommended to approve the purchase from Law &amp; Order Technology.
All right, so this is approving $25,596. Is this a reimbursement grant? So this money will be reimbursed by the governor's office Violence Prevention Grant. Do we have any questions for staff regarding this? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilman Jones and a second from Councilman Godfrey. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll now move to item number four of the agenda, which is presentation of the city's FY 2023 comprehensive financial report. I believe Mr. Chapman with Nicholas Hollis Associates is here to provide this financial overview. Thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Council. First off, I want to say I appreciate the city allowing us to provide the audit services for the city. We completed our audit for June 30, 2023. At the end of December, submitted that to the state of Georgia as a part of our state law, on time, so no problems with that. Just a little bit about our firm. We're a local firm here in Dublin, Georgia, serving approximately 75 governmental entities across our eight offices. Our offices stretch from pretty much here to Rome, Georgia, so we cover a good portion of the state. We have about 250 team members. Right now, it's probably over 250 in the pack season, but we're kind of a little out around 250. As far as the engagement team on this engagement, I was a partner on the engagement. Been serving with the firm 17 years. Our quality review partner at our Kennesaw office was Pammy Gavis, and she has 30 years of experience. And the audit supervisor who does the work, the real work on the audit is Jennifer Viove here in our double office. Our responsibility as your auditor to render an opinion on the financial statements of the city in accordance with government generally accepted auditing or accepted accounting standards, and we do that in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. And what that means is that we're providing a reasonable but not absolute opinion on the financial statements, that they are free of material mistake. The main thing you're looking for is our opinion on those financials, and I'm pleased to say that we had a clean opinion on the financials. And like I said, that means that the financial statements that were prepared are fairly presented in accordance with accounting principles. We are also in the process of finishing up the single audit, which is on your federal wards. We have one major program this year, is that railroad grant that was a required single audit, so at this point, we're expecting an modified opinion on that as well. A modified is accounting jargon for a clean opinion, so that's what you're looking to receive. And the city is required to do those if they spend more than $750,000 of federal grant money in a year, that triggers the single audit, so that you are subject to that this year. As a part of it, we do provide a communications letter to management that is passed to you, and I'm just going to get a few of the highlights of that letter real quick. In your financial statements, there are a lot of numbers, but there's also some words. The most significant policy in those words would be number one to the financial statements. That's where the city defines all of their accounting policies. For each item in the financials, there's a policy that describes how the city accounts for those items. As a part of your audit, there's, you know, like I said, hard numbers, cash. I can easily confirm the cash from the bank, and they tell me that the city has X amount of dollars, but endless financial, but also a lot of estimates. And we review those estimates and the, how the city accounts for those. The major ones of those would be the pension and opel valuation that the city uses third-party actuaries to calculate those liabilities. We review the inputs for those reports and found no problems with those. As I said, the financial statement disclosures support the financial numbers in the report, so in the back part of those financials, there's disclosures. We do assist with the preparation of those disclosures based on information provided to us. Have no problems with those disclosures. As far as our relationship with management, we did receive cooperat, full cooperation from the city's management staff and others. That doesn't just include the finance department. Our team has to interact with others regarding grants, the police department. Everyone's always gives us what we need as fast, I mean, as quickly as possible. Have no problems with that. No disagreements with management on any accounting issue or whatever. During audit, there are adjustments made during the process of the audit. So, and a lot of those have to do with the actuary reports. Those don't come in right away. Usually, we have the financial trial balance before those evaluation reports come in, so that's the majority, the major adjustments are related to those actuary evaluations. We propose those changes to management that can either accept or decline to record the adjustment. Management did report any adjustments that were proposed by us, so there were no past adjustments. As a part of audit, at the end, we asked management to provide us with a representation letter. What that means is there's a lot of statements in there that pretty much in summary would say, "We gave you what you asked for, and we told you the truth." So that's part of the audit, and that goes into audit documentation. And as far as independence, we are required to be independent to the city. No one on my team can serve on city council or in management, so we are independent in that regard, but it also restricts what kind of services we provide to the city. It wouldn't be appropriate for me to come in and instruct management on how to account for something, and then come back and audit. So during the year, we did not provide any services to the city that would impair our independence. We'll look briefly at a couple of financial numbers at this point. You know, this is looking six months back in the rearview mirror, but for the fiscal year 2023, your property taxes and local option sales tax numbers remain relatively stable. Boss did pick up a little bit for 2023, but the property tax number gets that league based on what was collected from the prior year. This pie chart just shows the breakdown of the general fund. Where does the general fund spend the money? The general fund is the main operating fund for the city, and no surprise, 53% of your expenditures are off of public safety, that's fire and police protection. That's pretty much in line with other government, city governments. That's usually around 50% is what we see on that breakdown. 16% public works, that's your streets and sanitation, that's paid out of that fund. 15% of the general fund, and then the remaining is housing development, cultural recreation, and judicial, it makes up the smaller amounts. Looking at general fund balance, there was an increase in the general fund balance from 2022 to 2023, going from 4.9 million to 5.4 million. That just means that the inflows to that fund exceeded the outflows by approximately half a million dollars, and sometimes that can do with timing or revenue timing, but it's always positive to see that number increasing. The city does meet the recommendation from the Governmental Finance, Financial Officers Association, which says 60 days of expenditures should be at least in fund balance. Most governments carry more than that, because if you don't, then you may have to go borrow from the bank. So always a good, healthy fund balance keeps you from having to go borrow short term on a, on a tax anticipation note during the year. Luckily, the city doesn't have to do that, because they have a healthy fund balance. Just to highlight some of the capital investments for 2023. Out of the SLOs fund, almost $4.1 million was spent between Hillcrest Parkway and Subpart Road. I think everybody appreciates those investments as we drive through those roads. SLOs fund, a little over $3 million for purchasing and financing public safety equipments for public works, water, gas, and vehicles and equipment. And then finally, out of the enterprise fund, what was it funded by SLOs, an additional $900,000 for equipment infrastructure for those enterprise funds, which will include the water, sanitation, gas telecom. Looking at your unrestricted acquisition, this would be the unrestricted portion of the enterprise, major enterprise funds, and what's available for future investments into those funds. Of course, you always want to maintain a healthy unrestricted fund position in those funds to fund future developments, any kind of repairs, significant repairs that need to be made. All of those funds remain stable or increased during the year, so that's a positive for those folks. And then finally, the DFOA, Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting. The state has a minimum requirement of what has to be prepared for financial statements. DFOA has a Achievement Certificate that you can apply for, that's voluntary for the government to apply for, that includes not only the basic financial statements, but some additional information that gives the public and more information about financial trends of the city. The city did submit their 22 audit for consideration and will be awarded for the 34th year this, and not to take that lightly, only 55 cities out of the 535 municipalities have received this award for 2022, so that's a positive for the city and the city we had again this year. And that's all I have. Do we have to answer any questions?
Thank you for the presentation. I'll say that I had an opportunity to review the financial report, and there's a lot of great information in there, and anybody in the city, any citizen who's interested in pretty much any of the, any financial aspect of the operation of city government can get their answers from this financial report. It's well laid out, it's comprehensive, and I think it's a very helpful tool for any interested citizen. I did note at the end, you have some supplementary materials that has some interesting things, such as who our largest employers are, and I noted that the VA is again our largest employer with, I think they're now over 1,600 local employees. That Best Buy is our largest taxpayer, closely by YKK, and West Rock is our largest gas user, which is important part of our city fund. And then our tax rate, property tax rate, is the lowest it's been in over 10 years. So all of that is very positive for our talent. So thank you for helping put all this information together and reviewing it. Do we have any questions from council members?
I know, but I want to say thank you to Blake and his incredible team for making this happen, because that's something that's important to all of us, is being financially responsible to our constituents, so thank you.
I'd also like to, yeah, Greg mentioned it, but this audit wouldn't be put together without the cooperation of our, of our staff, Blake and Josh, leading the facts. We appreciate what y'all do on a annual basis to continue this 34 years on record.
It takes a lot to put together that book of what, 150-something pages, probably? Yeah. Definitely appreciate this. If any of you guys haven't seen it, this is the book he's referring to, and it is absolutely comprehensive. It's filled with charts and data and explanations of the city. It's very interesting, very helpful. But thank, thank you for your work, and thank you, Blake, for what you've done too.
Imagine a life-changing injury. Imagine the fear and unknown. The Houston Clinic Sports Medicine Team, the only physicians in the area with advanced certification in orthopedic sports medicine, treats sports injuries with innovative techniques. The Houston Clinic has helped nearly a million athletes live without pain. Imagine getting back in the game. Imagine the best game of your life. The Houston Clinic Sports Medicine Team.
It may be cold elsewhere, but the deals are hot here at Dublin Chevrolet GMC. As you can see, new shipments are coming in weekly to Dublin Chevrolet GMC. So make sure and get to Dublin quick, because as you can see, they're rolling out of here fast. You ask for more inventory, and we've delivered, whether it's the most iconic Chevrolet ever made or the new Chevy Blazer EV. We have it here at Dublin Chevy GMC. And remember, Don sells cars well only at Dublin Chevy GMC.
We'll now move to the next item in our agenda, which is the second reading in public hearing on ordinance 2401 to annex 331 acres of land. Mr. Powell, do you need to read the ordinance before we have our public hearing? Okay, thank you.
This is ordinance 2401, and it's annexing and incorporating into the municipality of the city of Dublin, Georgia, 331 acres, more or less, of land located at parcel 1067. One and two is M2 general industrial zone. The proposed use is the continued development of the Georgia highway, instead of rail jumper site, with industrial use there. This property is at the corner of the Highway 441 bypass and Highway 257. 30, excuse me, 60 acres of this property is already being used and going to be developed for Washington, the project that's announced that's coming to Dublin, and we're thankful for the Development Authority and their work to get those industries coming to Dublin, provide the jobs and the investment in our community. This is, includes the entirety of the site, though, as we're going to, the Development Authority, the county, and the city are working together to bring some infrastructure improvements to the property that's going to benefit not only Washington, but future industrial prospects that might come there, so we're going to get an annex on the entire factory.
All right, at this time, we will close our city council meeting and open a public hearing to receive comments regarding this proposed annexation. If there's anyone who would like to speak either in favor of or against this proposed annexation, now is your opportunity. Please come forward. The microphone is yours, if anyone would like to speak regarding this proposed annexation. Thank you, Mr. Waltrip, and just for the record, if you could just state your name and your, who you're representing.
Good afternoon. I'm Ryan Waltrip. I'm president of the Dublin Lawrence County Development Authority. Appreciate the city's interest in this property, appreciate the city's willingness to work with the Development Authority for the last several years, as we have developed this side as a community to attract new industry to Dublin and to Lawrence County. We appreciate all the support we've gotten, again, from the city, from various departments such as engineering, planning, city manager's office, and of course, city and mayor's, or councilman mayor as well. So again, we're really excited about this property, not only for Washington and the 460 new jobs and $176 million of new investment that that company can bring to our community, but also, you know, it's getting a lot of traction, continuing to get a lot of traction from other projects across the state, so we're looking for great things as well for the rest of it. But again, we appreciate the council's favorable support for, for the annexation of this property, so services can be provided for water, sewer, public safety, and others.
Thank you for that. As, as you do represent the applicant, there's normally an opportunity for any council members who have questions for applicant, any questions? I know that we spoke in pre-council. If there are no questions, thank you for coming, Mr. Waltrip.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding this matter? All right, if there's anyone else who would like to speak regarding this matter, we'll now close the, we'll now close the public hearing and turn this matter over to council for action. We have a motion to approve the annexation from Councilman Jones with a second from Councilman Brown. This will be for a zoning classification of M2. At this time, we have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion on the motion? If there is no discussion on the motion, Matt and clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Councilwoman Godfrey.
Yes.
Councilwoman Colby.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Mascara.
Yes.
Or Ms. Paxis.
All right, well, we're looking forward to continuing to work with the Development Authority. Thank you, guys, for coming this evening. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
We'll now move to item number six on the agenda, which is discussion and action on an agreement with Georgia Power. Mr. Powell.
In your materials, there's a contract with Georgia Power for the installation of 16 lamppost-style streetlights along Madison Street. This will be a part of our streetscape project there. There's a $150,000 upfront cost of that, and then there's a monthly cost of $234.88 thereafter, and that's for all, $234.88 for all 16, not each. This is, this will be part of that streetscape project, and we're looking forward to getting that going. The $150,000 will come from the grant that we received from the project. The monthly cost will be both every year and our monthly.
All right, so this is $150,000 for the streetlights on Madison Street to be reimbursed out of the, I can't remember the name of the grant.
It's the rural downtown.
Rural downtown.
Okay, the rural downtown grant that we received, so this will be reimbursed from that grant. Do we have any questions for staff regarding this item? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion. Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Mascara with a second from Councilman Colby. Any discussion on the motion? With no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. That motion passes. We'll now move to item number seven on the agenda, which is discussion on an emergency declaration related to Church Street Rice Avenue Sewer Repair Project. Mr. Powell.
This is resolution 2402, a resolution on the city of Dublin ordered by the district mayor council authorizing the city manager to negotiate a contract for the emergency repair and upgrade of sewer mains at Church Street and Rice Avenue, to offer the mayor to execute and deliver an agreement for said services to provide for effective dating for other lawful purposes. As has been brought up in previous council meetings, and the public has seen, with that issue with the sewer line over here on North Church Street, staff hasn't been able to go back out since our last meeting and do some additional work to try to clear that up, and I believe there's been a temporary fix to that, it's not coming out on the road any longer. But we do, the problem, underlying problem still remains, and we need to replace a section of the line there, so we're asking the council to declare this an emergency, so that we can procure the services for the work to be done on that basis.
All right, you've heard Mr. Powell's explanation. Do we have any questions for staff regarding this declaration?
Do we know how quickly the contract and the bidding will happen for this?
As soon as, well, we'll be getting, going dealing directly with a contractor on it, but it's going to depend on their schedule, but we're going to find some, hope we can get it for pretty quickly.
It's being designed right now, right?
It is still in design.
Any other questions? All right, do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Mascara and a second from Councilman Godfrey for the declaration of emergency for the sewer repair project, which will allow the city manager to move forward without having to go through the normal bidding procedures. Any discussion regarding this motion? If there's no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right, we're now moved to, we will now move to item number eight on the agenda, which is a declaration of surplus. Mr. Powell.
In your materials, there's a listing of items that we no longer have use for, mostly coming from the police department, and there's some equipment there, holsters, belt buckles, pistol holders. We have a load of water meters there, 596 of those. Those are, as council knows, we've been replacing several of our water meters each year in the last two years, and these are some of those that we've removed. Would like to try to sell those, some other cities may be interested in them. And then we've got some other various items from city hall and the city clerk's office, as well as an old 1975 John Deere backup from the golf course. I think it's incumbent on me to let you know also that impersonating a police officer is a crime, so if you do purchase any of these items, please govern yourselves accordingly. I say that for councilmen, which is as much as I do.
All right, so you, excuse me? Do you have a photograph of the tractor of the backup? There it is. Okay. All right, council has had an opportunity to review this. Any questions for staff regarding the surplus? If not, do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Jones and a second from Councilman Colby to declare these items surplus. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Item number nine on board appointments will be deferred to the next meeting, so it is now time for citizens' comments.
Hi, I'm Tom Dominey. Here at Dublin with Nelson, we pride ourselves on providing the industry's highest quality products at the most competitive pricing. We are a full-service wholesaler specializing in plumbing, irrigation, and industrial products. With a staff that collectively offers more than 50 years of expertise, our team knows your industry, and we can answer your questions and help you get the parts and equipment you need. From Moen to Renai, we carry the plumbing, irrigation, and industrial products you need from the brands you trust. We also carry a great lineup of Milwaukee tools. At Dublin with Nelson, our goal is the long-term success of your business. We achieve that goal with a simple commitment, doing things right, one customer at a time. If you have a question, or if you're looking for a hard-to-find part, give us a call. Our experts are ready to help. Order online, give us a call, or come by at 507 Airport Road in Dublin. We're committed to building long-term relationships with our customers by earning your business every day.
We invite y'all to come down to Holy Smokes Barbecue, Dublin's fresh, everyday barbecue source. 1100 Hillcrest Parkway, 272 Ribs. You can place your orders online, dublinbbq.com. We're all about faith, family, and friends, and remember, life's too short to eat bad barbecue. Remember later this summer or early fall, our second location at 2123 South Highway 441, the old Shoney's Building. We're remodeling that up, so we'll be able to better serve you, offer more of our grilled options and other things that we do. So we're so thankful for you, Dublin. You guys have been so good to us, and we just want to invite you guys just to come on and experience what we think good barbecue is.
If there's any citizen who would like to make a comment this evening, this is your opportunity. Please come forward and state your name and where you live, and we'll be glad to hear your comment. Ms. Browning, our clerk, will set a timer for three minutes, so there's an maximum comment period, three minutes per person. Is there anyone who would wish to speak this evening? Ms. Morton.
I think it's kind of a formality that I even introduced myself now, y'all, no way. But I'm Vonda Morton, proud eighth-generation native of the sovereign state of Georgia. And since February is Georgia History Month, I thought I'd take a little time this evening to give y'all a brief outline of the early history of our sovereign state that y'all seem to have no pride and allegiance to. Did y'all know that Georgia was originally explored by De Soto? The Spanish called the area Guale, and while they explored extensively, with De Soto passing just north of what's Lawrence County, no permanent Spanish settlements resulted, although there were a string of successive missions set up along the coast. In 1733, the British colony of Georgia was chartered, but it wasn't actually settled until 1733, which is the actual date that is of our establishment. Georgia was the last of the 13 original colonies founded. It had some interesting prohibitions in its original charter. No slavery, no boos, no lawyers. Kind of lied that last one. Georgia originally had no governor, but was governed by a board of trustees. While founder James Edward Oglethorpe had originally envisioned Georgia as a haven for those facing London's debtor prisons, in reality, no debtors were among the original settlers. Georgia was basically to be a military buffer between the Spanish in Florida and the British in South Carolina. When Oglethorpe and his settlers made landfall at Yamakraw Bluff in modern Savannah on February 12, 1733, they immediately set about establishing peaceful relations with the Muskogee band, now mostly Yamakraw, under the leadership of Chief Tomachichi. Their efforts were aided by Mary Musgrove, whose mother was Crete and whose father was English. She acted as an interpreter between the colonists and the Yamakraw's. And I know time is limited, so that's about it for now. I'll give you a little more history if I may. I'll give you a little more history if it matters, Councilwoman. For now, y'all know the drill. Somebody at these meetings needs to honor our sovereign state. I pledge allegiance to the Georgia flag and to the principles for which it stands: wisdom, justice, moderation, and courage.
Thank you, Ms. Morton. I'll note that February twelfth is Georgia Day, the state of Georgia. Iberan debate that Oglethorpe and the hundred and sixteen companions landed in Savannah, so that's coming up in the next couple of weeks. Any other citizens' comments this evening? All right, if there are none, then we will move to further comments. Mr. Gruber, city attorney, any comments this evening?
Good evening.
All right, thank you. Ms. Browning.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Brown.
Just like, again, just that couple words been said already. Thank you, Mr. Chapman, for your presentation, and we'll thank our staff for their coordination of a couple of that presentation.
All right, thank you for those comments. Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. I thank everyone for coming out. I thank Mr. Chapman and staff, and Mr. Blake for a wonderful job with the financial report, comprehensive report. I also like to thank staff, city manager, county commission, the county chain, and Rick Authority for the wonderful job they've done over at Oak Conne Gym with the goalposts, getting their field red. Thank you for doing that, and for what's coming. That's just the beginning, but I think the hard work that we've been putting forth over there has come forth, and thank you for all that we're doing, showing the citizens that we are trying to make them improve and go down their side of time, and I think we're doing a wonderful job. So thank everyone, enjoy, be safe out there, and remember, this is also Black History Month, so let's learn the history. Thank you.
All right, thank you for those comments, Mr. Jones. Ms. Godfrey.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no comments, so.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Colby.
I have a comment.
Mr. Smith, Councilman Smith.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out today. Tara, if you could, can you give the citizen a update on Oak Conne?
All right, we're putting you on the spot, Ms. Bradshaw. Do you mind just telling us, telling us what's going on? I understand that there's.
You want me to do it from here, or you want me to do it from the microphone?
If you don't mind coming to the microphone real quick.
Right. I would like to.
Thank you so much.
I owe you one.
You're on my list.
Yes, see you next weekend. So as you all know, we have engaged Brian Felder with Felder and Associates. We had our first committee meeting in December. Over the last forty-five days, Mr. Felder and his team have been working on a design for a Conne gym. We have our preliminary design, and Garbutt has just wrapped up the first round of budgets for that project, and next we'll go back. So we have three committee meetings, all the books, to have within. First, we wanted to go through and get all of the input, as representative of the community. Then our architect will come back and say, okay, this is what you can afford out of all those, the big wishlist items, and so that's what the committee will review next, and then we'll come back and finalize the plans. We hope to do that in February, will be our next one, and we hope to do our final meeting by the end of March, early April, and then that way, it'll be ready to start construction within the next two or three months, however long it takes Garbutt to then kind of marshal all of everything together. So again, in part of that, they'll come back to the city with the final budget, and you'll approve all of that for the project.
All right, well, thank you for that update, and also we.
Is that another question? Any other questions, or?
Oh, yeah, if you want to speed, cushion, anything, make sure you go on our website. I'll contact Ms. Tara or Felicia.
Yes, please, on the website, there's a traffic calming webpage, or yes, please call any of the staff, and we'll be happy to put in the information for you.
All right, thank you. I also want to thank the volunteers on the Conne Gym Community Steering Committee. I know y'all had one meeting and have another meeting coming up, so appreciate those people who are serving in that committee. Mr. Mascara, any comments this evening?
I have a question.
All right, thank you. Mr. Powell.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman, and Blake Daniels for all the work he does, trying to make it.
All right, I want to thank everyone for coming. This meeting is now adjourned.